Good evening and welcome, everyone. Ready to open the 19th regular session of City Council for the year 2025. Begin tonight with a roll call.
Joel Althausser?
Present.
Sue Fox-Brocker?
Present.
David Beasley?
Present.
Steve Walter?
Present.
Chad Miller?
Present.
Paige Brenn?
Present.
Robin Jones?
Here.
John Schwimmer?
Present.
Lynn Webb?
Here.
Cindy Murray?
Here.
I'd ask everyone who's able to please stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Glorious God, you promised to open doors of blessing and abundance for your people. We ask that you work with us this evening. Come upon us and cause us to have a productive meeting. Lead each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions. Enable us to think and plan in ways that will achieve great results. Purify our thoughts and motives so that each one of us will enter this meeting desiring the good of others and the pleasure of your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and especially welcome to all those folks who are here tonight for an event, a couple of events that is always very nice to see happen. We have two new appointees that we're going to have. Judge Grimslet has agreed to swear in this evening. So first, I will introduce Doris Bloom, who has accepted the, to fill the seat for Council at Large. And Judge, if you and Doris could step forward, if you could go ahead and take care of the swearing-in for us. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Doris Bloom.
I, Doris Bloom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
In the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of Counsel at Large.
Of the office of Counsel at Large.
Of the city of Kenton, Ohio.
The city of Kenton, Ohio.
Yes.
Doris, Tim, do you think you want a single, okay, a single picture of both of them there?
Sure.
Okay. So Doris, if you want to hang out down here just for another minute, we're going to put your right to work after this. Judge Grimslet, then if you will handle the next, and please introduce.
Cassie Teedackling will be sworn in now as the municipal prosecutor and assistant law director for the municipal court. I, Cassie Teedackling.
I, Cassie Teedackling.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
In the state of Ohio.
In the state of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly and partially.
Honestly and partially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As the municipal prosecutor, assistant law director.
As the municipal prosecutor and assistant law director.
Of the city of Kenton, Ohio.
Of the city of Kenton, Ohio.
And hard county municipal court.
And hard county municipal court.
Yeah, John, we want to make certain we get those signed.
Right, yes.
Okay. If we could, Tim, would I get a picture of the two of you?
Get a picture and I'll get them on the way out.
And if you, Judge, yeah.
Why don't you stand between them?
Hey, Tim, Tim, will you share that with us? Will you share that with them?
We have Doris.
Okay, fourth speed.
Did I really meant what I said? Before you leave, would you like to just tell counsel just a couple minutes about yourself? And then Doris, you can go up and take the seat and we can get yours here in a minute. But I think Cassie may be leaving.
Thank you, John. I was just going to ask her to do the same. So Cassie, if you get right behind the podium there and tell us all about yourself.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to be here and do this tonight at your council meeting. I'm very excited to serve the city as well as the county. I am very blessed and want to thank Judge Grimslet as well as prosecutor tutor for giving me this opportunity to learn and grow, as well as the city law director, John Schwimmer, who has really helped get me prepared to learn as much as I can to assist in the county that I grew up in. So I'm very excited to be here. I look forward to getting to know you all much better, and if you need anything, you know where to find me.
Thank you.
You want to introduce your family?
Sure, I'd love to. Tonight, my family is here. In the corner is my father, Rob Deckling, as well as my grandmother. My mother is here as well, and along with my grandmother and my boyfriend, Kew. So they, I'm very grateful that they came out tonight as well.
Let them.
Thank you.
Well done, Cassie.
And Doris, if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and some of your thoughts about your service and anything else you want to share.
Well, I am a lifetime resident of Kenton, Ohio, and I love Kenton. And I've been a volunteer in many respects. I've been involved in the armory since almost the very beginning as a board member and also as, one time I was the manager of the facility. Involved in Harden County genealogy as a volunteer as well, and most recently with Revitalize Kenton, which I think you're all familiar with, and we're trying to get some good vibes going here and do some things for the community. And we all believe very much in Kenton, Ohio. So this is the next step up for me is to get involved with my city government. So hopefully I can help out.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're going to move forward with the meat of our meeting here tonight.
And they're free. Anyone that wants to leave, it's free, you don't have to.
Anyone who wants to is free to go. Well, we should, we shouldn't make Andy's. Big shoes to fill, Cassie, really big shoes to fill, but he's moving on to bigger, better things.
I'll stay.
No, I'm.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. Again, that's exciting and welcome to both of you. So tonight, with a new council person in our midst, I will slow things down a little bit, maybe a little bit more explanation at times just on procedures. Does this all good, especially myself, to do that once in a while, to just make my brain slow down a little bit and remember what our business is here and why we're doing it. So anytime if there are questions, I'd encourage Doris to speak up, and same goes for all of, all y'all. Please do speak up. Please do discuss. I will tell you this, Doris and I chatted quite a bit last week, one evening, and she is ready for this. So be prepared, everybody, she's going to ask some pretty high-level questions that we need to really think about. So with that, let's move on to approval of the prior minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as they were printed in your packets? All right, I don't hear anything, so they'll stand approved as submitted. As far as citizens requesting time to speak, we have no one on the agenda tonight, but I do see a couple of folks that might be here to talk. And if so, when we get toward the end of the meeting, there will be comments from the public, and you'll have ample opportunity to come up and talk. Also, if there is a piece of legislation that we're talking about, don't be afraid. Raise your hand and I will try to catch you. And if you have comments on that piece of legislation or questions within reason, we will try to address those as we can. Communications, a couple things. You did, I think most of you might have received an email from a resident, Ms. Liz Baldwin, regarding traffic on South High Street. I would encourage all of you to take a look at that email. And I would further encourage streets, alleys, sidewalks at the next committee meeting, maybe to chat about it. Cindy and Lynn are aware of the email as well. Does sound like that we've had some relatively high-speed traffic on South High, and that has been posed as a concern. So I want to take a look at that. Also, Chad, we have the email from Cindy. I didn't know if you wanted to remind us about tomorrow night and any comments about that.
Yes, so we'll be having a second town hall meeting at the middle school tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. Try and make a little more comfortable seating in the auditorium there. Encourage anybody in the city of Kenton and community to come out. We'll have five to six administrator managers from around the state that run charter cities. So it'll be a good opportunity for our community to ask them directly, day-to-day, how they do operations, pros and cons, and get some real-time information about how the charter city works for their communities. So it'd be a good opportunity for the community to come out and get some good information and be informed for, obviously, we're in the middle of early voting now, and November, what, 4th is coming fast. So it'd be a good opportunity to educate yourself and be informed on what the charter is and what it would mean for our city, so.
And please reach out to Chad, and if you have any questions before then. If not, will everybody be there tomorrow night, middle school, auditorium, 6:00?
Yep.
Finally, the last piece of communication I have, just wanted to remind council members, Kristi did send out her monthly email regarding reports from, from her office. That was, that, we got two Fridays ago, on October 3rd. Just a reminder, and I don't always remember to do this, and I need to, that is our responsibility to make certain we review those reports. We have a fiduciary requirement to understand what, how taxpayer dollars are being spent and how we are accounting for that, those expenditures. If you ever have questions, reach out to Kristi. But those reports are there for your benefit and as a requirement of your office, so please review them. Any other communications at this time? Anybody have anything? All right, then we'll move on to petitions, which we have none that I'm aware of. So administrative reports, I don't think we have anybody from police department here, do we? So it's fire show. Chief?
I just wanted to state that we had a real good weekend for fire prevention week last week. In fact, we do still have one more tour coming to the fire station this coming week, so Kenner's coming down. So I just want to say thanks to all the businesses that have partnered with us through our effort with National Fire Safety Council to provide the materials for the kids and everything. So I just really appreciate all their businesses supporting the community and stuff, that we're able to do as much as we can with that. And so I just want to say thanks for that and had a real good weekend, hopefully got a few kids to come down for the poster contest for the second graders, and so got to ride in the trucks. So I'm sure they had a fun time with that, so thanks.
Thanks, Bruce. Any questions?
No.
Okay, we'll move on then. Economic development, anything, Mayor, that you want to chat about?
Yeah, we've, I mean, I don't, we've met, we're Holly Underwood, and we have a housing coalition, so we met last week on that, and it's just, again, there's some developers that have interest in, you know, again, what our infrastructure looks like and the wares, and it's very early on stages, but Holly formed a housing coalition, and it's for the entire county. But it's good conversation. Met with John Cross and Chase Ikenberry. Chase Ikenberry is with RGP. Again, we have a vibrancy grant that's available to us and from Jobbed Ohio. It's a half a million dollar match, which puts in a million dollars for downtown renovation. So we met with them again and trying to drum up and try to find that person that might show some interest in it. But I'm appreciative Jobbed Ohio is really basically saying it's yours, we just got to come up with the taker. So a lot of good things that are happening, we just got to keep recent, we don't keep moving, so.
Any questions from them? All right, income tax department, you do have the report, monthly report, and just as a reminder to everyone, an explanation, what you're seeing on that report is a comparison of last year, year-to-date, versus this year, year-to-date, and what percentage of total projected collections we were at at the same time. So this was discussed in the finance committee meeting earlier, running a little bit behind, but not horribly far behind where we were a year ago. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to chat with, reach out to Kristi, finance committee, or Cindy, or Lynn. All right, Kristi gave quite a bit of extensive reporting to finance committee earlier. Checked the third, nothing to report tonight. Same with treasures, so go on to law director. John, anything you want to talk about?
No.
Okay, Cindy.
So I think the mayor will probably touch on projects. But just want to remind everybody, I saw something on WKTN.com that there is a burn ban during the month of October from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So just want to remind everybody, October and November. So no open burning between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, even if you have a burn permit in the city of Kenton.
Mayor Webb?
Let me touch base real quick on projects. So as far as the downtown, hopefully you'll be seeing some pavement being put down tomorrow or Wednesday. They did get a lot of concrete done. If you look on Columbus Street, you see we went ahead and got that taken care of. If anybody has questions, you'll see the big, the cutouts or bump outs in the mid-block, so that'd be a mid-block crossing. We find that to be a little bit, might be a little bit safer. Eventually, when we do Franklin Street, we'll have mid-block crossing also. So if you see those little half moons sticking out, that's what that's for. So also, we're doing a project up on East Patterson. The water guys, crew is doing that. We have a two-inch water line on East Patterson that just gives us fits, and it leaks constantly. So we have a new line that's already been in there, but they've never tapped into it. So the guys are tapping in four houses on that. So they'll be done tomorrow, and they should be moved over to that new line, and then the county will come in and pave from the alleyway, right? I would say alleyway to Barone Street, just to clean that up. But we wanted to get the infrastructure done prior to county coming in, just so we aren't cutting that up. So the guys are doing a fantastic job on that. We're going to start leave pickup soon, sooner than we normally do. So as soon as they keep coming down, we'll start picking them up, so we'll go with that. Just a reminder, too, we have a couple of weeks left on South Wayne, South Market, and North Detroit, out by the city limits, that, to get your parking arrangements made, because there'll be no parking November 1st on those streets. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, then. Move on to committee reports. Finance, you have a written report from the September 22nd meeting, finance also met tonight. Anything you want to add?
I would just add that we will be meeting again at 6:00 prior to the next council meeting. We should have a little more solid idea as to where the budget will be and where we're going to have to make our last pairings and shavings in order to present a balanced budget to council.
All right, any questions? Okay, MAF, I don't think you met. Public Utilities?
White State, 3:30.
All right, and then has streets, alleys, or legislation met? If not, you see the scheduled meetings there on your agenda. Okay, council members, anything with regional planning?
No, sir.
Parks and Rec Board?
This Wednesday.
Grove Cemetery Board?
Not really. They're going to start working on the chapel roof sometime this month.
Great, okay. Treasury Commission? I hate to make you talk, Steve.
22.
Okay, so, and then BKP, the district board will meet a week from tonight. Have not seen that agenda yet, so if anything exciting happens, I'll make certain to share that. No old or new business on the agenda? Anything in either category that we might need to talk about? All right, then, we're going to get into ordinances and resolutions. You can see we have quite a few items under first reading, and at least one item that has an asterisk, and we'd like you to consider it this evening. So without further ado, Emma, if you want to read the first item.
Ordinance number 25-017, an ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids for materials and supplies for the calendar year 2026, and contract with the lowest and/or best bidders, and declaring an emergency.
And I think, now that's, that's right, that's a schedule. So, but I don't think Cindy wants to start her shopping immediately.
Oh, that, yeah, that'll speak first of the year.
So we've got some time, unless somebody on council wants to get in a hurry. If there are no objections, we can read that again in a couple of weeks. Okay, we'll do that. Next item.
Ordinance number 25-018, an ordinance amending Kenton Codified Ordinance Section 249.18 relating to fund classifications and declaring an emergency.
Anybody want to talk about this a little bit, high level?
Do you want me to? John?
I can, the, our issue in the past was, the percentage was 33.333%. And from the auditor's accounting standpoint, that percentage became very difficult when running that through. So all we did was change one to 34, and then 33 and 33. So they're even figures, which is very minor, because again, it becomes a headache for the administration and departments when they're trying to work that through on a daily basis.
Round the error.
So, right. So that is the change.
Okay. Again, it sounds like Kristi's not desiring her penance to be that perfect immediately.
Will we go back, will we go back retroactively and balance that then for the audit for next year, is that the plan?
So right now, like when Whitney does payroll, she goes back and calculates it out to get it out to 100%.
Okay.
So this is just keeping her from having to go back and recalculate and add back in.
Maybe calculating perfect.
So we probably will do this starting January 1st.
Okay, so we can wait on that?
Yeah.
And read that again in two weeks, then, if that's okay with everybody? All right, next item.
Resolution number 038-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the District Public Works Integrating Committee and to execute a project agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the city of Kenton, US Route 68, State Route 31, a roundabout improvement project, and declaring an emergency.
And Cindy, it looks like this one's got time to commit the audit.
Yes, yes.
Anything you want to?
No, we just are asking to help fund our roundabout project for OPWC.
Mr. President, I move for suspension of the three regional rules, resolution number 038-25. I'll second that.
It's been moved by David, seconded by, was that Steve, to suspend the rules? There is no discussion on suspension rules, so we'll go ahead and vote on just that task right there, suspension. Go ahead.
Sue Fox-Brocker?
Yes.
David Beasley?
Yes.
Steve Walter?
Yes.
Chad Miller?
Yes.
Paige Brenn?
Yes.
Doris Bloom?
Yes.
Robin Jones?
Yes.
All right, that passed the 7-0, so now we can go ahead and.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of resolution number 038-25.
I'll second that.
Moved by David, seconded by Robin, to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and go.
David Beasley?
Yes.
Steve Walter?
Yes.
Chad Miller?
Yes.
Paige Brenn?
Yes.
Doris Bloom?
Yes.
Robin Jones?
Yes.
Sue Fox-Brocker?
Yes.
That passes 7-0 as well.
Resolution number 039-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement for construction of Clover-Lark Lane Water Line Replacement Project between the city of Kenton and the Ohio Water Development Authority, and declaring an emergency.
Yes, so this is the water line that we can't pave Lark and Clover till we get this water line redone. So we're kind of in a time crunch. We, in order to apply through, and I didn't know this, but, well, I knew that we, we were too late to apply for EPA funding for this, but I did find out that through Cindy Brooks, that we could go straight to OWDA and apply for funding, a loan through them to help us pay for this. So it can go three reads, because we apply once the bids are received. So you don't even have to apply until the bids are received.
Any questions for Cindy about this one? All right, we'll read that a second time in two weeks then.
Ordinance number 25-019, an ordinance providing for additional appropriations and for transferring funds for the year 2025 for the city of Kenton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Just kind of a cleanup, or?
It's.
This one's with, David?
The transfers are cleaned up.
Okay.
Additional appropriations are $4,000 for the fire department maintenance and equipment. I'm going to support this needs and more postage, and we receive more real estate taxes than what we did last year, therefore the fees for the real estate taxes are a little bit higher. So it's a cleanup.
Can I take it? We've got some time here, though.
My understanding at this point.
Okay, then we'll read that again in two weeks. If anything further comes up, please, if you have questions, seek out Kristi, Finance Committee, and Mayor. All right, that takes care of our first reading items. Let's go on to second read.
Ordinance number 25-015, an ordinance to authorize and designate a revitalization district within the city of Kenton, Ohio pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section
Anything new on this to share? No change in time commitment? Okay, we can read that a third time in two weeks then.
Ordinance number 25-016, an ordinance providing for an additional appropriations and for transferring funds for the year 2025 for the city of Kenton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So there was a pretty lengthy description that described. So, there was a pretty lengthy description that described what, what Kristi and Finance Committee were wanting to do here. This is an item that we would have actually tried to pass two weeks ago if we could have. You notice the asterisk there with the urgency of a couple of items in here. We would like council to consider it tonight. Is there anything new or any additional information that maybe you need answered?
President, I move for suspension of the three-read rule for Ordinance Number 25-016.
Been moved by David, seconded by Peg, to suspend the rules. We'll go ahead and vote on that.
Steve Walter?
Yes.
Chad Miller?
Yes.
Peg Wren?
Yes.
Doris Bloom?
Yes.
Robin Jones?
Yes.
Sue Fox-Brocker?
Yes.
David Beasley?
Yes.
That's a 7-0, so can entertain a motion?
The move was present.
Thanks, David. Seconded by Steve. Is there any discussion of this ordinance? Okay.
Chad Miller?
Yes.
Peg Wren?
Yes.
Doris Bloom?
Yes.
Robin Jones?
Yes.
Sue Fox-Brocker?
Yes.
David Beasley?
Yes.
Steve Walter?
Yes.
That passes 7-0 as well. All right, last item.
Resolution number 037-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director, the City of Kenton, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Rule Community Assistance Program to complete a utility rate study for water, sewer, and storm and declaring an emergency.
You want to give us the rundown on this?
Yeah, so, we did this before, back in 2020, 2021, with RCAP, and we had, we implemented the changes that they recommended that we make, the rates that they recommended. We, it was good for five years. We are at the end of our five-year period. They are going to do storm and sewer free of charge, but we'll need to pay for water. So, this is to allow us to sign an agreement and we will pay for the water portion of the rate study. It doesn't mean that those rates, whatever recommendations that they make, immediately go into effect. You guys all have to approve them and, but it is to get their recommendation looking at everything that we have going on and what the rates should be.
And any rate change would come before legislation in council. So, anytime we think with those rates, it has to come to vote. So, again, like Cindy said, they may have recommendations, but ultimately it will be council's vote before it's going to go into effect.
And time is an issue because?
It's not, it's just we've been-
Oh, no. Well, we've got an asterisk there. I mean-
We need to get going on it.
We need to get going toward it to react to it.
Yes. It takes, it takes a couple of months to do it and our rates, although our, we do have a build-in clause, it could go 3% at, in every March, but March is usually our time where the rates change.
So, it's council's wishes if you want to consider this to see?
President, I would move for suspension of the three-read rule for Resolution Number 037-25.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chad. No discussion on suspension rules. We'll go ahead and vote.
Peg Wren?
Yes.
Doris Bloom?
Yes.
Robin Jones? Sue Fox-Brocker?
Yes.
David Beasley?
Yes.
Steve Walter?
Yes.
Chad Miller?
Yes.
That passes 7-0, so I can entertain a motion on that resolution.
The move was present.
Thanks, David. Seconded by Peg. Is there any discussion? We'll go ahead and vote then on the resolution.
Doris Bloom?
Yes.
Robin Jones?
Yes.
Sue Fox-Brocker?
Yes.
David Beasley?
Yes.
Steve Walter?
Yes.
Chad Miller?
Yes.
Peg Wren?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Anything else? Or we have nothing on third reading? Any other matters to be considered tonight? Comments from the public? Anyone here come right up to the podium and introduce yourself and let us hear what you got to say.
Name's Cliff Winiger. Got a concern down on Vine Street. What's the zoning of the old boundary down there?
To look at the map.
Yeah.
Well, my concern is he's turning it into a junkyard. You know, I got friends that live on Market. Can't even sit in their backyard because all the junk, you know, it looks like shit. And let's just tell you what it looks like. But that's a concern of mine.
Agreed.
Pardon me?
Agreed.
Yeah, it is. It's awful. And drive down by and look. The grass is growed up, trash everywhere, cars are everywhere.
Concrete.
Yes. He took all the other out there. Why can't he take that out there, too? He took this building out on 68? Took it out there.
We'll handle it.
Sean, that's M1.
It's just a concern.
No, but it's, it's-
It's ongoing.
And it will handle it.
I got one more. At the end of Ida Street, we have trucks taking that way around. Well, they destroyed those folks' wall down there. I think something should be done, keep semis from going that way. They just, they had that real nice retaining wall and it's destroyed. Somebody drove right over it. That's another concern.
I hope as soon as we get this open, we can get, I mean, it's just hard to monitor.
Oh, I understand.
And it's, you, like Gar's saying is, you can't make it up.
No. And-
And I get it.
Is the city going to have any funds available for people that have property destroyed from this to help them?
Probably their property.
That was, the, we kind of looked that up and that retaining wall was, it's in the city right away. So, you know, what that looks-
Oh, it is. I did not know that. But I do remember.
Just a little bit of a corner wasn't, but for the majority it was. So, we need to look into that. I know with that, we've discussed that.
Right.
On, yeah, we'd love for the semis to not take that route.
Oh, it's awful.
It is awful.
You see them come down Kohler Street and they'll go straight. Well, now they're backing all the way up Kohler Street because that's dead ends. Evidently, they can't read the sign. So, they back all the way back up the street. Then they turn that way and they tear up people's yards and everything else, but.
We feel that at a local level and it's a federal issue also, as you know, but-
All right.
We'll keep our-
Just something I observe.
Thanks.
It doesn't, it's not hard to observe it. All you have to do is drive around.
We're just sit still for more.
Yeah, yeah, you know, you have to move. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. I'm Stephanie Temple. I just wanted to be here tonight representing Revitalized Kenton and let you know how thrilled we are that you're considering the revitalization district and how important that's going to be to our downtown and businesses coming and the type of build, you know, business owners that we want to attract. So, we thank you for working on that and bringing that through and I hope the next meeting it gets voted into an ordinance, but we very much appreciate that. That's something we've been looking forward to for a long time and think that's really going to make a huge difference in our downtown businesses and other areas that will attract the kind of, you know, businesses that we want to see and the kind of visitors that we want to attract to our town. So, we just wanted to give you a kudos for getting that done.
Thank you. Last call? Okay, then, news media. Council Members Administration, Kristi, any last words? Chief Donnelly? Sue?
The loss of Chief Musser's mother-in-law and to keep that whole family in our prayers.
Steve?
No.
Same thing that Sue said, everybody please keep me in her prayers next Monday. Hopefully, I'll be able to walk without a cane after this.
That's your advance shares?
Yeah.
I'm good. I'd like to, I know what Sue has said about the passing of Kim Kaufman. She was a great community supporter silently a lot of the times. She was very active in downtown decorating, always cut all the greens for the pots, never ever said, "I've done this." You know, they ran a business in town for six years and she and her husband were instrumental on organizing the swim team for the City of Kenton and voted and stayed as active coaches for 24 years. So, she was loved by a lot of people and she's made our community a little dimmer with her passing.
Cindy? Lynn?
I didn't touch on Detroit Street, the north section. They got all the water line fixed, so that was a good thing. So, that's moving along really well. Also, with Kim, it is, it was a shock and one of those things you don't expect, but again, it's a little dimmer, but we are a much brighter community for what she and Merrill has done, especially out at the pool and at the Y and the impact that they poured into our youth around here is, it's unmeasurable and that is a true community member. It's a tough one and, yeah, we left up the family with all our prayers and our thoughts and just a ton of gratitude towards that awesome.
Okay. Couldn't say anything any better than what's been said about Kim Kaufman already, so I won't try other than to say that she'll be greatly missed and I'm sad that she's not a part of our community every day. But I would argue we wouldn't even have a swim program without Kim and Merrill Kaufman. And that's just one, one thing that she's been involved with, so it's a great loss and I feel for her family. Also, a brighter note, welcome Doris. Had a very enjoyable time discussing a lot of things with you the other evening. I would encourage you all to try to get to know Doris better if you don't know her already and, and she has a vibrant, exciting personality that I think will be a shot in the arm for us all. So, I'm looking forward to working with you. First meeting, October's down. Five meetings to go. Got a lot to do. So, pay attention to emails, ask questions, seek out residents, ask their opinion, talk to each other. And step one, I guess, first on the agenda tomorrow night, 6:00, we'll be at the middle school auditorium and we'll try to shed even further light on the charter initiative and what that could mean for our community. Until then, and then after that, our next regular meeting, October 27th, a few days before Halloween. Count, Finance will meet at 6:00 before then, as will be the case probably until we get a budget in front of us.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Which committees are you assigning?
You're going to be, you're going to take onto's prior committees. I'm going to get you a sheet here at the end of the night. Yep. Any other questions? And I, yes, we discussed Finance and she was here tonight and any, any meeting is open to everybody. Sometimes some of those chairpersons, so you really got to wave and wave your arms around and get Dave to call on you, but.
He is typical.
No, you're welcome to any, any meetings we have, so as, as is anyone. So, I think that's it for tonight until tomorrow night and then after that, the 27th, we're adjourned.